at great risk. West Virginia would more than likely be the most impacted state to any cuts to either of these programs. Instead of providing solutions, our lawmakers have taken the barbaric approach and attitude that stripping healthcare and food away from already vulnerable individuals and families will solve our financial issues. I think we all here understand and know that that is simply not true. That ain't right. My friend Alex from the West Virginia Center for Budget and Policy will speak more on numbers here shortly. As I said, we have several speakers here today who are going to educate you, they're going to empower you with information to have these tough conversations. Conversations create community, and we all need community right now. Right now, I'd like to pass it over to Lida Shepherd, who is our friend from American Friend Services of West Virginia, and she is going to lead us in a few moments of community building.
Thank you, Mindy. Hi, everybody. Can you hear me okay? Whoa, okay. I'll just stand right here. So, one of, I think, the goals I think of of any gathering like this is to make a ruckus and make some noise and make it so those our congresspeople and our senators who did not have the courage to be here today to hear our concerns is to connect with one another, is to see each of you as an asset, as a source of wisdom, as a source of hope for each other, the fact that we are all showed up here tonight to take a stand for our democracy and for the well-being of our loved ones and our neighbors. So, we're just going to take what the here is your charge. For three minutes, you're going to have three minutes to find somebody you don't know and share with them one thing that keeps you up at night, one thing that keeps you up at night, and one thing that either is a source of hope or joy for you right now. So, each of you get to share those two things, something that keeps you up at night, and I know a lot, there's a lot that's keeping us up at night, but something that is giving you joy or a sense of hope. And you have three minutes to do it, so go forth, get noisy.
Make sure your mic is turned on. I don't think it is.
It was popping.
No, that was her mic. She was sitting down.
It is on.
I just turned it on.
You're right.
The pop in the crack was her sitting down.
With her phone, it's just fancy.
That is time. I hate to interrupt everybody, but we're gonna keep on rolling. I hope that this was an opportunity for... Can you hear me once? Clap once. Can you hear me? Clap twice. Can you hear me? Clap three times. All right.
Oh, beautiful. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Loved hearing your chatter, and maybe some of you got to practice your pitch and your talk that you're gonna get here in a bit. I'm gonna turn it back over to Mindy. Thanks, everybody. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, Lida. Turn my mic back on now. No? You can? Okay. Am I okay, though? Am I doing all right? All right. Gotta check with my technical supervisor here. So, again, thank you, Lida. We really appreciate that, and I think that just kind of highlights, you know, how we need to build community. Coming out of the pandemic, it's been hard because we all got so isolated, and it was difficult. I know it is, and it was for me. So, thank you for being here, creating community together, and, you know, finding our people is what I call it, and so that feels good. I would like to bring up our first speaker, who is Reverend Watts. I think, I don't think he really needs any introduction around these parts. He's the pastor of Grace Bible Church, community advocate, the speaker.
Good evening, everyone. And thank you, Ms. Mindy, for that kind introduction. I'm always excited about coming to the Universal, or Unitarian Church, because this is where I actually launched my public ministry of advocacy, from this pulpit, back in February, I think of 2002, and I gave a speech to state of African-Americans in West Virginia, almost got me ran out of Charleston and out of my church. But I'm still here, and these people are great friends, right? The banner of their Black Lives Matter was the first such banners that went up, and I'm honored that they have not taken the banner down, as other people are changing their names, getting politically correct around this anti-D E I movement. But I'm really excited to be here and to be really among friends, and I'm sure I'm gonna be treated better tonight than I got treated a few weeks ago in my church. That's another story. That's another story. I hold no grudge, no hard feelings. We're at a war, and I think Thomas Paine was right when he said that these are times to try the hearts of men and women, and tyranny like sin is not easily overcome. But the harder the struggle, the sweeter the victory. We are engaged in a titanic struggle for the very heart of this nation, for our democracy, certainly for our children. As an amateur historian, I'm always trying to find a historical hook. Where can I go back in history and be encouraged and be motivated in how my spirit lifted? And I think I found it. I think it's in the state of West Virginia. I think it's the early 1900s, when the people in the southern West Virginia coalfields were being brutalized by the coal barons and the railroad barons, and they came in basically and took control of the southern West Virginia coalfields and put those people in an industrial police state and were denying them their constitutional rights to really work and earn a fair wage and be treated with dignity and respect. And they used the wedge of race. This is nothing new, the wedge of race, the same thing they did after Reconstruction in the 1870s, the wedge of waste. So, they brought in the Eastern Europeans and put them in segregated coal camp housing, had the Appalachian whites, had them segregated, and had the blacks segregated. Who were the ex-slaves that had been recruited in from the southern states? This is how the southern West Virginia coalfields were developed, and for years they had the blacks and the whites and Eastern Europeans fighting against each other. But one day, they had an epiphany, and I think Mother Jones helped them get that epiphany. They realized, when we go into the coal mines and we come out, we're all black. We've all been eating the coal dust, our lungs are being eaten away, our respiratory system have been destroyed, we've been crippled and we've been maimed, and our families are destitute, and they came together and they forged, they forged a coalition that took on the coal baron, and it took several wars, but eventually they won, and they organized United Mine Workers of America. And so where we are now, we gotta look at that model, and the great-grandchildren of the Eastern Europeans and the great-grandchildren of the Appalachian whites and the great-grandchildren of the former slaves gotta realize, we came over on different ships, we're in the same boat now. We face the same... We are confronting the same oppressor, the same oligarch, the same groups that want to rule and want to exploit people's labor and to deny them the fundamental rights of citizenship in the United States of America. I close with this. She talked about Medicaid, she talked about SNAP. I was born, the four for seven children, single mother in the southern West Virginia coalfields, never went to the dentist until I was 17 years old, and when I went, I had 18 cavities. My mouth is still filled with the silver they put in my teeth. I would not have very many teeth in my mouth if it hadn't have been to AIDS, the family depended children, if it hadn't been for the medical card. And that's why this is important to me. And so as I leave, I'll talk to my good friend Lida Shepherd earlier, and I think we've had a common epiphany. I believe at ground zero now for this fight for economic justice and fairness, I believe it's McDowell County. I believe it's McDowell County, the southern West Virginia coalfields. I think we need to go back and spend extended period of time there and dramatize the plight of low wealth, low income, poor people, black and white, to the nation until we get their attention, and expose the legislators on their part of the state that are coming to Charleston and selling their people out year in and year out. Tyranny is not easy to overcome, but the harder the struggle, the sweeter victory. And we struggle hard, we'll get the victory. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Reverend Watts, and I'm so glad you brought up the southern coal wars, because I've referenced that several times. If you were in Morgantown a couple weeks ago, I mentioned it, I said, "This is our Blair Mountain. We're not bringing weapons, we're bringing the power of the ballot box, and we need to use it and use it well." This is not an issue of neighbor against neighbor. This is not an issue of, you know, differing ideas. This is an issue of the top putting their foot on the necks of the bottom. I was born in Beckley, West Virginia, and I am the daughter and granddaughter of two coal miners, so I know, I know those struggles, I know, you know, being able to get out of that, it was not a pleasant experience, you know, even, even back in the early 70s when I was coming up, so. But I can't even imagine what they went through during those coal wars, and so we got to bring back that determination that they were going to have better, that enough was enough, that these people weren't going to enslave them, basically, you know, both black and white, into the coal mines for nothing. And that's what I feel like we're being brought back to. So, we need to use this and not just meet the moment, but be the moment. Our next speaker is Alex Gallo, and she is representing, she is the Community Engagement Coordinator for the West Virginia Center for Budget and Policy. She has just facilitated her own town hall earlier this week, so she is a pro, and she is an amazing person to work with. I love collaborating with her, so please welcome Alex.
Thanks for being here, and thank you, Mindy, for that gracious introduction. Thanks to everyone for being here and for the organizations that partnered to bring awareness to this happening on such short notice. I think we're all feeling a little bit anxious about what's going on with our federal government and how our money and how our programs are being dismantled, and they're at risk for losing lots of money. I wanna just start off by saying I'm the Community Engagement Coordinator with the Center on Budget and Policy. I am not a policy expert. My passion is getting people fired up about holding their legislators accountable to the promises that they make to the people. I wanna read a little bit from our executive director, Kelly Allen, who is brilliant, and we're so grateful for her leadership. You can check out more at the, our website, wvpolicy.org. I think we do a really great job of outlining a blueprint of what's possible for West Virginia by, while also calling out what's happening currently. Federal dollars in West Virginia support a wide array of public services and systems that touch many, many lives in West Virginia. From healthcare and food assistance to childcare and public schools, under both the Trump administration and Congress, many of these programs are being considered for deep cuts or significant reductions. While Mindy mentioned that I would be going over the numbers, I wanna make it clear that no one in West Virginia is a number. We are... While the federal dollars matter and they make a difference, those numbers change lives. Those federal dollars keep people alive. Those federal dollars keep people who don't have food on their table having some sense of food on their table, which in today's day and age in the United States of America, it blows my mind that we have people that go hungry every night. And I just want, and I apologize for getting a little emotional, but this, to me, is wild that we're even having to beg for these programs to be fully funded and protected instead of our billionaires and corporations just paying their fair share in taxes. That's why we're here. I mean, we believe that if folks that are at the top pay their fair share in taxes, these critical programs can remain intact. The extensions of the tax provisions of the 2017 Trump tax law aren't happening in a vacuum. They are part of a triple threat, which includes congressional legislation, executive actions, and tariffs that combined will reduce living standards and increase costs for most West Virginia households. Under this triple threat, the bottom 80% of households would be worse off financially. The tariffs, I know this is a huge topic of conversation for folks, but this is factoring in the adjustments that were announced on April 9th. They're expected to increase costs for the average U.S. household by $2,700 a year. I'm sorry, I, it just blows my mind to read these numbers. The tariffs, factoring in the adjustments that were made on April 9th, are expected to increase costs for average U.S. households by $2,700 per year, far dwarfing the average household's tax benefits of extending the tax, Trump's tax cuts. So, when we're hearing some of this rhetoric around, "We're gonna be putting more money in the pockets of West Virginians, we're gonna be giving back to the hard-working West Virginians," that's just not true based on the math and the way that we, these calculations are done. Because West Virginia has few wealthy people and zero billionaires, but many households that live paycheck to paycheck and that rely on Medicaid and SNAP, there is little reason for our congressional delegation to support this triple threat of policies if they are working on our behalf. Now, when we talk about numbers, in West Virginia's first congressional district, which Carol Miller, if you're listening or watching, that, this is your district, we've invited you to be here, we have a beautiful picture of you here, 35% of all residents in Carol Miller's district, 35% of her constituents rely on Medicaid for their healthcare. That's over 300,000 people in our state. That includes 27,000 seniors, 93,000 children, and 48,000 people with disabilities. Congress's budget blueprint instructs the committee with jurisdiction over Medicaid to cut spending by at least $880 billion. If that were broad-based and distributed evenly over across the states on a per-capita basis, West Virginia would have to reduce its Medicaid program by about 10% or $465 million annually. The state could presumably choose to make up that funding gap, but it is unlikely that the state budget could absorb new Medicaid spending of that size. Now, I do notice we have a representative in the room, and I'll ask, maybe he can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe that the state of West Virginia has the money to make up that spending gap when close to over 50% of our state's budget is federally funded. In addition to many people and providers losing resources and health benefits, this would harm West Virginia's economy. A $465 million annual reduction in federal funding for Medicaid is expected to reduce economic output by nearly $1 billion per year and a loss of 5,800 jobs statewide. More than half of those would likely be concentrated in the first congressional district, given the Medicaid coverage distribution in the state. I just wanna touch on SNAP, and then I'll wrap up. I don't know if I'm taking up too much time. In West Virginia's first congressional district, again, Carol Miller's district, nearly 163,000 residents rely on SNAP. Over 160,000 West Virginians in Carol Miller's district rely on food assistance to help put food on the table, including more than 55,000 children. Congress's budget blueprint instructs the committee with jurisdiction over SNAP to cut this spending by at least $230 billion. If that were applied as broad-based SNAP cuts and distributed evenly across the states, West Virginia would lose an estimated $133 million a year, or approximately one quarter of the entire SNAP program. This, this impacts our grocery stores, our farmers' markets, our farmers. One proposal reportedly under consideration would be to implement a required state match for SNAP for the first time in history. Requiring the state legislature to pick up more than $130 million in SNAP benefits annually is unlikely, as it is more than the state spends on childcare assistance, CPS workers, and the state's promised scholarship combined. If the state were unable to make up the gap, which is likely what would happen, food assistance would be cut by one-fourth, potentially reducing enrollment by 24%, or reducing the benefit by 24%, which would, could reduce it from approximately $6 a day to $4.50 per person, and reducing the positive impact SNAP has on our state's retailers and grocers. Over 2,200 retailers and grocers accept SNAP benefits statewide in West Virginia. We know that taking food away from people, taking healthcare away from people is harmful, and it will have an unprecedented amount of damage done to our state if any of these programs are taken away or this funding is decreased by even a little bit. And I think tonight, if we can just do anything, and I know folks are feeling a little bit maybe disheartened or discouraged, because time and time and time and time again, these folks are not answering their calls, they're not answering their emails, they're not showing up to these town halls, but we have to keep going. And if you're feeling like you can't, that's okay, we all need a break, I need a break, we all need breaks, and know that you can join back in, and there's several organizations here that are always looking for folks to join in, link arms, and let's hold these guys accountable. I mean, these programs keep West Virginians alive, and we need to, we need to stay alive, number one, but we deserve to thrive, and that means expanding these programs, not taking them away by even a percentage. So, thank you so much.
Alex, did you say it was $6 a day for SNAP per person? I have four teenagers at home. I can assure you, none of them could survive on $6 a day. I can't, I can't even fathom those numbers. And instead of being here to hear us speak, to talk to us, where have Carol Miller and Riley Moore been this week?
El Salvador.
They've been in El Salvador. Bear with me just a moment. Where my representative, who is Riley Moore, has been taking fun selfies with prisoners.
Not giving them out.
Not, not helping to get them out, no. He's in El Salvador. We did, we did. And these are people who have not had due process. Did his trip bring any jobs to West Virginia? No. Did his trip benefit West Virginians in any way? Are we seeing any benefit to this? Did his trip help the NIOSH employees who were just laid off several weeks ago in Morgantown, in my hometown?
Absolutely not.
No, absolutely not. When I called his office and asked why he was there, I got a statement that said he wanted to go and show support for President Trump. I believe there are less expensive ways to show your... Yes, yeah, to show your idolation of someone.
That is criminal.
Well, do we remember Lindy England in Abu Ghraib? Do we remember when she was, she was a service, service, I believe she was in the army and was taking pictures? Didn't she get court, well, not only court-martialed, but dishonorably discharged? So, what can we expect for our, for our representative?
Expect better. Uphold the Constitution and uphold his oath and swear to uphold the Constitution. That's what we expect. Yeah. I'm honored.
Absolutely, and also we expect him to represent the people of West Virginia, which is also what he swore to do, and he's not doing it.
He's public servants.
No, they are not public servants. Sorry, I could get on this for a while, so I better, I better move on.
The service is rich.
That's right, it's the top versus the bottom.
They want us, they want our votes, just like Trump said. I don't care about you, I just want your vote, that's how they are.
So, before I go a little hot under the collar, our next speaker is Kate Waldeck. Dr. Waldeck is an assistant professor of pediatrics at the Marshall University Jones C. Edwards School of Medicine and practices pediatric critical care medicine.
So, first of all, I actually really hate public speaking, so please bear with me. I'm gonna do my best. Thank you, guys, for inviting me to speak today. My name, as she said, is Dr. Kate Waldeck, and I wear several hats, and I'm gonna be speaking to you wearing all of them at some point this evening. So, we're gonna start with my job. I'm a pediatric critical care doctor. I was born here in Charleston, lived here most of the time through fourth grade, and then we moved to Huntington in fifth grade. I did leave the state for college, and I didn't really, didn't really see myself coming
I mean, these programs keep West Virginians alive. And we need to stay alive, number one, but we deserve to thrive, and that means expanding these programs, not taking them away by even a percentage. So, thank you so much.
Alex, did you say it was six dollars a day for SNAP per person?
It was six dollars a day for us.
I have four teenagers at home. I can assure you, none of them could survive on six dollars a day. I can't even fathom those numbers. And instead of being here to hear us speak, to talk to us, where have Carol Miller and Riley Moore been this week?
El Salvador.
They've been in El Salvador. Bear with me just a moment. Where my representative, who is Riley Moore, has been taking fun selfies with prisoners.
Not giving them out.
Not helping to get them out. No. He's in El Salvador. We did. We did. And these are people who have not had due process. Did his trip bring any jobs to West Virginia? No. Did his trip benefit West Virginians in any way? Are we seeing any benefit to this? Did his trip help the NIOSH employees who were just laid off several weeks ago in Morgantown, in my hometown?
Absolutely not.
No, absolutely not. When I called his office and asked why he was there, I got a statement that said he wanted to go and show support for President Trump. I believe there are less expensive ways to show your... Yes, to show your idolation of someone.
That is criminal.
Well, do we remember Lindy England in Abu Ghraib? Do we remember when she was a service... I believe she was in the Army and was taking pictures? Didn't she get court-martialed, not only court-martialed, but dishonorably discharged? So what can we expect for our representative?
Expect better. Uphold the Constitution and uphold his oath to and swear to uphold the Constitution. That's what we expect.
Absolutely, and also we expect him to represent the people of West Virginia, which is also what he swore to do, and he's not doing it. No, they are not public servants. Sorry, I could get on this for a while, so I better move on. That's right, it's the top versus the bottom. So before I go a little hot under the collar, our next speaker is Kate Waldeck. Dr. Waldeck is an assistant professor of pediatrics at the Marshall University Jones C. Edwards School of Medicine, and practices pediatric critical care medicine.
Hey, good evening. So first of all, I actually really hate public speaking, so please bear with me. I'm gonna do my best. Thank you, guys, for inviting me to speak today. My name, as she said, is Dr. Kate Waldeck, and I wear several hats. And I'm gonna be speaking to you wearing all of them at some point this evening. So, we're gonna start with my job. I'm a pediatric critical care doctor. I was born here in Charleston, lived here most of the time through fourth grade, and then we moved to Huntington in fifth grade. I did leave the state for college, and I didn't really see myself coming back at that point. I trained entirely out of the state for undergraduate and residency and fellowship, but I actually did end up coming back. And I think that really speaks more to my parents than me. But at any rate, there was something that I couldn't extinguish, that I felt like I needed to come back and give back to the community that made me who I was. So, I'm here today speaking as an individual. To be clear, I'm not speaking on behalf of either of my institutions, but I am speaking in a way on their behalf, because I'm here to advocate for them to keep my hospital, and really probably many of the hospitals in West Virginia, from closing. The majority of our healthcare infrastructure in this state is reliant on Medicaid funding. We have about half of the children that we serve at my children's hospital, at Hoops Family Children's Hospital, are covered by Medicaid or CHIP. Right now, our Congress is debating a budget reconciliation bill that would slash billions of dollars in funding. And you won't find the word Medicaid in bold, or really at all, but Medicaid is absolutely on the chopping block. It just comprises too much of the federal budget to escape these cuts. So, it's not named, but it's there. And these cuts would devastate the children and the families that I work to serve every single day. In West Virginia, our patients depend on Medicaid and CHIP, not only for inpatient hospitalizations, but also for clinics, for outpatient checks, for well care, for vaccines, for asthma treatment. Our patients with complex medical needs, those who are born prematurely, who rely on ventilators, those who have genetic conditions or disabilities, or pediatric patients with cancer, all rely on Medicaid. This is often the only insurance that will cover what they need in terms of doctors' care, visits, medications, and even equipment. They need these services not just to survive, but to thrive, and they can. These programs don't represent government overreach. They represent government, right? This is a country that is... The government is run for the people and by the people, and our public servants seem to have forgotten this. These are investments in our children. This is not just a budget. If Medicaid is defunded, even in part in the state, we absolutely do not have the budget to make up for it. Not a chance in the world, not with the Hope Scholarship absolutely exploding. So there will be closures. There will be hospital closures, there will be clinic closures. And right now, Washington is telling us that, like the other states, we just need to tighten our belts. But here in West Virginia, we passed the last hole in that belt a long time ago. We got out the drill, we drilled a few more holes, and right now, we're hanging on by a thread, and that thread is Medicaid, guys. So this isn't about numbers. This is about people. It's about children with cancer. It's about babies on ventilators who get better and go home and live full, long lives without saddling their parents with life-altering debt. This is about trying to keep a tax cut in place, primarily for the wealthy, on the backs of working West Virginians and West Virginia's children. But even talking financials, this doesn't actually do anything with the debt. It just transfers it to the hospitals, and it transfers it to the patients. That need doesn't go anywhere. And in fact, we've looked at places, states without Medicaid expansion, and we know that the debt increases because people don't get primary care. They present to the ER for absolutely everything. They present sicker, they can't afford their medications, they're uncontrolled. This actually worsens our fiscal crisis. And while Republican leaders in other states, even Texas, even Utah, have stood up and voiced concerns about this budget and putting Medicaid in the chopping block, have we heard anything from our representatives in West Virginia that's meaningful? I haven't. That's not leadership, that's abdication. And they must stand up. They must not balance the federal budget on the backs of our children and our working poor in West Virginia. They must protect Medicaid, and they must protect CHIP. They must protect the institutions that keep so much of our state protected from preventable tragedy, whether it's medical or fiscal. So I'm gonna switch for a second. I was asked to talk about Medicaid primarily, but you guys have probably heard some of the statements made in the news by RFK Jr. about people on the autism spectrum. So, one of my other hats is that I'm a mom to a child with autism, and she's a blessing to my life every single day. So, I wanted to talk about this both as a mother and as a pediatrician. And I can't believe that in the year of our Lord, 2025, that we have to talk about this with the Secretary of Health and Human Services, saying that autism destroys families, that these children are a burden on society, that they're gonna find that cause, which, let me tell you, let me tell you, it's not vaccines, right? We've looked at that extensively. We actually know that autism is largely a genetic condition with environmental influences. The prevalence of level-three autism, which is the level of autism that requires the most support, and that's likely what he was referring to when he was talking about children who are a drain on society, has remained stable, actually. It's kids with level-one and-two autism that are being identified better, and we have the data for that. The American Academy of Pediatrics has put out a statement on that just in the last 24 hours. And the reason for that is that there's an evolutionary benefit to being autistic. So, just gonna name off a few people that either are autistic or who their biographers have said are very likely autistic, starting with Isaac Newton, Albert Einstein, Nikola Tesla, Emily Dickinson, Charles Darwin, Thomas Jefferson, Michelangelo, and our currently unelected Olaf Mark Daddy Elon Musk are just a few people. Some studies have shown that up to a quarter of physicians are on the autism spectrum because two-y people are assets to the field. So, instead of recognizing the gift that our autistic children are, no matter where they fall on that spectrum, a gift to be supported and nurtured, this man denigrates them while standing behind a budget that will cut every single Head Start program in the country and eliminate nearly all of the rural health funding programs. Where do we start? What do we do? So, this is room to put on hat number three. Like I said, I am a physician. That's really the only job I ever intended to have. I did get involved in local activism, I guess, semi-political, with the "No Parks, No Libraries, No Levy" in Huntington, West Virginia. So that was my gateway drug, and from there, I got involved with the Huntington Citizen Actions Group. And from there, I sort of stumbled into being one of the co-founders of the Huntington Capital Way in 5051, representation for the state of West Virginia. So, actually, all of these entities are nonpartisan, and all of them are potentially powerful. Some of them have already done some really powerful things. Peaceful protest works. This is, again, this is data-driven. There was a very thorough study, 2012, that looked at over three hundred major movements across the world, and they found that movements that were able to obtain and sustain 3.5% engagement were 100% successful, most in a much lower percentage of engagement. Peaceful protest, it works. So, there's many ways to get involved, but 5051 for the state is trying to continue with once-to-twice monthly events of just showing up, whether that is peaceful protest, whether that's days of service or days of action, whether that's days of celebration, because in times like this, celebration and joy is also resistance. So you show up. Call your representatives, that's number two. I mentioned I'm an introvert and I don't like public speaking. I don't like doing this either, guys, I don't. There is literally an app for that. I use the Five Calls app. Something that works for me is setting a personal goal. How many calls will I make how many days a week? That's gonna be different for everybody. Like I said, I already have another couple of jobs. So, you set your goal, and you meet it. Other things that have helped me is putting it in my therapy, my schedule is therapy, like therapy time. And also, I pick out time to call representatives to think. And unfortunately, that is basically never anybody in the state of West Virginia. I call other people's representatives to thank them for representing the people of my state when my representatives will not. And then the third one is, is that I write haikus. So, I'm gonna actually end with that. So this is the one that I left on the voicemail for Congressman Moore today. "Moore throws a thumbs up, CCOT tour, five-star fascism paid by moms and kids." Miller, due process? Who cares? "Unshredded Constitution, Miller stamps approved." Thank you for listening. Thank you for standing up for the kids who can't stand up for themselves and who our state representatives have failed to stand up for. Thanks. Didn't mean to do that. Dr. Waldeck, I want to personally thank you. I have two of my four who were diagnosed with autism. Definitely, none of us are... What would you say if you're not neurodivergent? Neurotypical? No. But my two who are diagnosed, our oldest is in college. She is an honor student. She will be graduating with honors, probably in about a year and a half. She had to take some extra time, do some other medical things, but very proud of her. Oh, thank you. And then our son, who is also autistic, he has straight A's. They're both brilliant. They both go to the restroom by themselves. Their bathrooms are messy, but no more so than any other teenager. They are thriving, and they play ball. They are the funniest people I know. They're not biologically related, but they are no more similar than any other siblings could be. It's very interesting. So, thank you from the bottom of my heart for speaking to that, because when I saw that yesterday, I was crushed, absolutely crushed, because my kids are amazing. And I'm sure every parent who has a child with some issue of some form feels that way about their kids, too, or at least they should, because they all have value.
Our next speaker is Mr. Kenny Matthews, who I have come to know this year and just simply adore. He is a lobbyist, criminal justice reform recovery advocate at the American Friends Service Committee of West Virginia, and is just an incredible human being. And if you don't know him, please come and talk to him, because you won't regret it.
Well, thank you for those kind of words. So I kinda do this for a living, where I talk. So unlike the previous speaker, the doctor, I'm comfortable up here. And I'm comfortable speaking because I've learned the power that our voices have. There are definitely people that should be in this room that are not here. Even locally, in-state, there are people that should be in this room that are not here. Why is that? It's because it's not about race, it's not about party affiliation, it's not about people individually. It's about the haves versus the have-nots. It's always been that way. They've just used other things, whether it's education, or race, or economic background, or citizen status, to create division. It's about those of us who struggle to survive and have life, liberty, in the pursuit of happiness that's supposed to be guaranteed to us by the Declaration of Independence and our Constitution of this country, that don't have the ability to do those things, because those that create the policy, those that have the power, refuse to actually do what they are entrusted to do, which is have the backs of every person, regardless of where they come from. In the guise of Medicaid, we heard from Alex, three, over three hundred thousand people in this state rely on Medicaid. And on this district. Okay, so District One, now that is roughly seventeen percent of the state population. Because last census, 1.77, 1.8 million people in the state of West Virginia, depending on who you ask and if college is in session or not. And three hundred thousand people in just District One that rely on that. Over a hundred and forty thousand people relying on SNAP benefits? That is an incredible amount of people that have the power to change the landscape. We, a lot of times, say things. We say that this is wrong, and that we need to do something about it. But we don't do the action. We talk a whole lot. We, as individuals, we as a group, have the power to change the political landscape easily. A lot of these racist people are running unopposed. A lot of these races, like just last, the general election of the presidential, we had a thirty percent voter turnout. Thirty percent of the voter, registered voters in the state, actually casted their vote. No wonder our Medicaid is being attacked. No wonder food stamps is being attacked. No wonder our schools, our children, our elderly, our underserved populations are being attacked. Because those of us that could have and should have used that process to get the people in that would actually have our interests in mind, failed to do so. But then, we post on social media how bad stuff is, and we're real quick to hit a follow button, but not real quick to hit the button for a candidate. We have a responsibility. We have to do something. And I personally have always told people that, I believe if we make one or two examples, that that will get the message across. For me personally, Medicaid is an important issue, because there was a time when I relied on Medicaid. I'm blessed now that I have a job that have really great insurance through, with American Friends Service Committee. But there was a time when my health, I relied on Medicaid. And I had a CPAP machine for my sleep apnea, and I had a Life Vest for my heart function. So, what happens? I work a part-time job, and I have another job because I had to work, I had two jobs hand-in-hand to survive and make things work. And I made just a little bit too much to continue to get Medicaid. I was still below the poverty line, but I wasn't within the range of federal guidelines to allow me to be eligible for Medicaid. And that happens to a lot of people. I have, I know somebody who, right now, recently lost Medicaid because they made fifty dollars too much. They can't afford private insurance. Fifty dollars too much, and they lost their medical benefits. I lost my medical benefits and couldn't afford the medication to continue my heart function. I couldn't afford the supplies for my CPAP machine. I couldn't afford to get a new CPAP machine because the one that I had was under recall, and I lost my medical insurance, so I couldn't buy another one. And I had to use one that was actually probably unhealthy for me to use. And I had to return my Life Vest because I no longer had medical insurance. And my heart function was just enough, increased just enough to where this, could say, "Well, you don't really need it." Medications were too expensive. If anybody knows, high blood pressure, diabetic medications are some of the most high-priced medications that you can get. And so, what happens? You don't go to the doctor. You don't get your medicine. You don't do all those preventative things that you need. So, I got my body, got used to just living like that, surviving, doing what it needed to do to survive. And then, here recently, ended up in a hospital. And thankfully, again, I have medical insurance now through my job, where I was able to go to the hospital. And they told me, they said, "Your heart function's at fifteen percent." And I was like, "Oh, that's not good." But it was because of, you know, a year and a half where I didn't have insurance. And finally got the insurance and I was like, oh, I'm fine now. I don't feel bad until you feel bad. And so now I have a Life Vest again that I have to wear 24/7, as long as I'm not in the shower trying to swim or anything like that. But if my heart goes into AFib, it shocks me. A lot of these representatives' hearts are in AFib. Their heart is not where it's supposed to be because they're not thinking about the individuals that they're supposed to be representing. They're not thinking about the families, the children, the elderly people, the people from coal mines who have black lung that need Medicaid for their treatments. The people with substance use disorders because of our representatives letting big pharmaceutical companies target our population that now have to have Medicaid in order to get treatment. But they're willing to sacrifice the people. They're willing to put our children and our vulnerable on an altar and literally sacrifice their lives for their own either agendas or their own political aspirations, or the ability for them to make more money. That... There's seriously something wrong with that. And I think that they, that we collectively need to remind them of where their heart is supposed to be, where the money is supposed to be going. Because instead of sending money for, we know that they really don't care about our children because they put policies in place where schools are closing left and right. Schools are where a lot of kids get nutrition from. That they get their breakfast, their lunch. Schools provide resources for them. But they don't care that these schools are closing because they allocate millions of dollars to different things, whether it's a battery plant in Weerton, West Virginia, for 750 jobs, that most of them aren't going to be West Virginians that get employed by them. Or for a scholarship that last count, over 22 million went out of state. Why are they professing to care about the people in our state, or the children in our state? And it's not, it's not a party issue. It's a heart and people issue. And so we need to hold them accountable, hold them to the standard that we say that they're supposed to be held to, and actually do something about it. We can change the landscape in our state. We can, movements start from very small populations. All it takes is that one catalyst. And I think them targeting our children constantly is enough catalyst that we all should be up in arms because they're the generation that comes after us that has to deal with it that we're going to be relying on. I know I'm going to be relying on my son when I get older, like, hey, take care of me, remember? I wiped your butt. Take care of me. And we all are going to be relying on our younger generation. So we have to take care of them. And we have to remove anybody and anything that seeks to do them harm. And taking away funds for Medicaid and SNAP is exactly that. Thank you.
Thank you, Kenny. And one thing we need to remember is the reason they're attacking our children and attacking public schools, their kids don't attend them. They don't care. They're, Capito's grandchildren, private school, private school. I mean, it's, so they don't care about public education. Another of my soapboxes. All right, so for our final speaker, I have, get my thingy up here. Dr. Kenneth Wright. Dr. Wright is a member of the West Virginia Chapter of Physicians for a National Health Program. I always want to say plan instead of program, so forgive me. Okay. It's plan, okay, sorry about that, plan. And Dr. Wright specializes in spinal cord injuries, is that correct? The CAMC website was not real thorough on your bio. So I will let you fill in the gaps that I have. And I really want to thank you for being here today. He had a puppy emergency, and so...
Thank you. Actually, my specialty is physical medicine rehabilitation, and I'm semi-retired at the moment. And I did, if I'm a little spacey, I only slept about two hours last night. Been in vet's offices the rest of the time, so. But it was a hard, hard group to follow here. Great speakers, and there were things that I was crossing out I didn't need to talk about. I was going to talk a little bit about the cuts to Medicaid, and I think Alex covered that so well, I don't have a whole lot to add. And of course, our group is Physicians for a National Health Program, West Virginia Chapter. Although you don't have to be a physician, and I would encourage you to look at the website. They're very data-driven, a lot of great information. And anyone who wants to participate is welcome. We have a monthly Zoom meeting on Sunday night that you're welcome to take part in. And of course, being Physicians for a National Health Plan, our issue is single payer. We believe that really the only efficient way to fund healthcare is through a national health plan that includes everybody, no exceptions. The Congressional Budget Office in 2021 did a study. They're not a terribly left-wing group, but they concluded this would be far more efficient than our current system, far less administrative overhead, less paperwork. And it's almost every other country, except for impoverished countries, have this already. And I like to hike, and I've done some hikes, international hikes, with people from England, Canada, Australia, France, Germany. And you talk to these people about our health system, and they're horrified. I said, what, people go bankrupt for medical bills? I mean, they don't even know what a medical bill is, really. So we are the outlier. And for all, and for all that, we spend more than they do per capita, and we get worse results. So I think this is, this is something I think we really need to work towards. And I don't even consider it a liberal versus conservative thing. I mean, just think how wonderful this would be for American businesses if they didn't have to pay health insurance for their employees. Think of how they could be freed up, how much better they could compete with international companies. And also, you know, we know of so many people, particularly middle-aged people, maybe in their 50s, early 60s, who really have some great ideas for business. They would love to be an entrepreneur and set up their own company and grow the economy. And they can't because they couldn't get health insurance. So they're stuck in their job just because of the health benefits. And I, I mean, I have friends like that, I'm sure you all do too. So that's, so I, I mean, I think this could be a real capitalist thing. This could really grow our economy to have a single payer system. That's my first point. Unfortunately, the next four years, we're probably going to get, not going to get a single payer. So our sort of, our fallback position at PNHP is to preserve what we have. And the best thing we have really is traditional Medicare. And it really is a universal system, except you have to be 65 or have a disability, or be on kidney dialysis. There are a few groups that qualify for it. I am old enough to get it, so I'm on it now. It was established in 1965, some of us old timers here remember that. Lyndon Johnson put it in. And there are a lot of problems with it. It is not adequately funded, but it's, I think, one of the best things we have. Now, unfortunately, in 1997, there was, a new program came along that we now call Medicare Advantage. It was called something else the first few years, and then in 2003, they changed it to Medicare Advantage. And basically what happens, if you sign up for Medicare Advantage, the government takes a chunk of money for you and gives it to a health insurance, and they manage your healthcare. Now, this is very profitable business for the insurance companies. Just the week from last Monday, it was announced that they were going to get a raise from the federal government of 7.2%. Under the previous administration, it had been predicted to go up to 4.3%, but the current administration bumped that up to 7.2%. And this is at the same time that payments to physicians and other providers have been decreasing. Actually, not just stayed flat, they've actually decreased over the last three years. So, so why do people sign up for it? Well, first of all, it's the advertising. I'm sure you've all seen it, it was Joe Namath a few years back. I don't know if they have some celebrity, is it? Sign up, you ready for Medicare, sign up here. And they don't even tell people it's Medicare Advantage. People actually think this is regular Medicare, but it's not. And typically, if you're a really healthy person, it's a good deal because the premiums can be lower, and they throw in little bells and whistles, you know, gym membership or something like that. But once you get sick, then you find out, it's not such a good deal. First of all, your choices are limited. Traditional Medicare, you can go to any physician or hospital you want. Under Medicare Advantage, you have a provider panel. So you may be only allowed to go to this hospital, not this hospital. And your care is heavily managed. And I know when I was working full-time, when we were assessing patients who would need expensive services, and they were Medicare Advantage, we'd all go, oh, no, this is going to be rough because we'd have to jump through all sorts of hoops. And frequently, patients did not get the services we wanted to give them that they would have gotten if they'd had traditional Medicare. And they often have excessive fees to people who have a lot of medical problems. It tends to be cheaper if you don't have problems, more expensive if you have a lot of problems. And many people actually end up switching back when they become very ill or the last year of your life. Last year of your life is statistically the year you're going to spend the most on healthcare, right? That makes sense. And you find people switching back, although, and I don't, I'm not going to get into the details, but there's some real serious things that get in the way of switching back that there's some legislation about. If people want to talk about that, I can get to it. And of course, the insurance companies like this. This is actually what they call cherry picking because they love to take care of people who don't have problems because they can make more money, and they love to get rid of people who have a lot of problems because they lose money on those ones. The whole idea of insurance is supposed to share the cost, but they like to not share the cost, get the money and not give the care. So there's a lot of concern now with Dr. Oz coming in. He has, he has talked about wants to make Medicare Advantage the default option, is the term they use. They also use that term in Project 2025, if you read that. Interestingly enough, Dr. Oz owns $600,000, that's over half a million dollars, of stock in United Healthcare. And we've heard about, we've heard about that company recently in the news. He said before the hearings that he was going to divest those. And I've been sort of following and, you know, searching, and I haven't found that he's actually done that yet, or at least he hasn't toyed with it. So that'd be something to check on. So, and PNHP referred to this as, this program is Medicare Disadvantage. And I would urge you all to work to preserve traditional Medicare, hopefully make it even better. I mean, there's a lot of room for improvement, I'm not going to hold it up as an ideal. And it should be extended to everybody, every single person in this country. And we should get for-profit insurance companies out of healthcare. Thank you.
I think all of our speakers have hit all of my soapboxes today. I was actually arrested protesting outside of United Healthcare. It was fabulous. So I want to thank all of our speakers, they've been great. But I also do want to open up the floor. I think we have, Gary, do you have the portable mic? You can be my runner for a few moments and allow, if anybody has any questions or any comments they want to make briefly that we can try and answer. I see that our fine delegate Pushkin is here, thank you for being here. I'm sure he would be happy to answer anything that he is able, like we all have limited information on what they're giving us. So if you could raise your hand, if you have anything you feel like you need to get off your chest or ask, we're happy to open the floor for you.
Jamie Clayder-Woodson, good evening, all. I've often wondered, since we're going down a rabbit's hole and people that are in the legislature and in Congress, I've been wondering how many of those folks, especially the West Virginian people, have benefited from being on Medicaid, from being on SNAP, from having to deal with not enough money for the month? And I would, I was just sitting here talking to this young lady, and I would think that would be an interesting study for somebody to do, to gather the data, to see how many of these folks, their family, at one point or another depended upon the very services that they're now taking away from the West Virginians. And I, like I said, I don't have the means or the intelligence at this point, I'm old, to do it. But I would really welcome somebody to do that study and give back to me because I think that would be telling to the nation, we need to point these people out and let them know if it wasn't for the services that your mother got, your grandmother got, your auntie, or whoever raised you, you wouldn't be in the position that you're in now to serve. So how dare you take from others what you benefit for from what allows you to put yourself and your family above others?
My name is Britt Dwyer, and I just wanted to say the gentleman who was in El Salvador, that Riley Moore went to visit and has thumbs up, there's a picture right there, that Carol Miller apparently went to visit, Kilmar Abrejo Garcia. I need to say his name loud, I need to keep saying his name. Do not let this go, I will not let this go. I called all four of these folks for two days in a row. I had to call Riley Moore at the Washington office, at the Morgantown office. At first, they wouldn't take my message because I'm not a constituent because I'm in Loudoun County. Well, Carol Miller is not using her phone either. So I told them, I called him, and I said, will you take my message now? So I've left several messages, I will not let this go. That is me, that is you, if you're a US citizen, that's you, at El Salvador. And they thought, man, they shouldn't have sent any of them. Mr. Moore, Congressman Moore, says he's a Catholic. He says he's a Catholic. He, he serves my God? Oh, in front of the prisons? I don't think so. I don't think so. And I use Christianity as a platform, and it's white Christian national, and it is not following Jesus. Thank you.
They're running for MAGA member of the month, as my delegate John Williams says.
Yeah, I have a question for Mike, if he knows. I'm a physician here in Charleston, I'm worried about the 170,000 people who are thinking that we just added under the Obamacare plan, thinking of cutting them off Medicaid plan. And I'm wondering, you know, as far as us picking up those extra dollars, I know we don't have any money, but a previous governor said we had this huge budget excess, and we cut taxes, and then now our new governor is saying we have a $400 million deficit. So I'm wondering how the accounting went from one to the other. I know there was a tax study passed, but the gods was that we could afford that. So I'm wondering how it is that now we are losing so much money that we can't afford anything. anything.
In our vote, so much of that so-called surplus was excise tax, that was one type of Medicare plan.
So we shouldn't have cut tax.
Right, we should ask your government.
Yeah, you're right, our former governor, who's now not here, who's representing us in the United States Senate, unfortunately, Jim Justice used to brag about a budget surplus, but he did a little trick by downplaying the estimates and artificially inflating the surplus. So what he said was not true. However, our current governor is also not telling the truth. The fact of the matter is, neither of those two statements are true. We don't have that surplus and we're also not looking down at this huge deficit either. I think Governor Morrissey is saying that because he wants to justify what he really wants to do and that's do what his buddy Grover Moore was advised him to do and that shrink the government to the size of something you could drown in a bathtub. And unfortunately, a state like this, a whole lot of people will get hurt. One-third of the state is on Medicaid. So, you know, these folks who didn't show up and aren't in these chairs, they need to fight for the people of West Virginia and they need to show up here. And they know that a state like West Virginia is going to be hurt disproportionately under this, it's not a budget continuing rest, they know that those people in West Virginia are going to get hurt disproportionately, but what they're doing is not practice. And I appreciate everybody that showed up here. You're working hard for the state of West Virginia than any of these four people that are here. A few of these folks are from a political dynasty, as I answered a question earlier, they've never been on Medicaid or on SNAP. They were all born, all these people were born into wealth, okay? They hit the birth lottery and that's why they are where they are. But real quick, I served in the legislature for two years with Riley Moore, and I was really upset to see that picture him posting in front of a concentration camp. Back when he was in the legislature, he and I worked together, and Eli from ACLU, I'll back this up, he worked with us in order to stop a bill that would have created a registry for refugees. And he said his faith, he said his faith wouldn't allow him to support something like that. What the hell happened to him now? All right? I was celebrating Holy Week right now, okay? He's celebrating Holy Week and I'm celebrating Passover. Neither of our faiths would allow us to stand in front of a concentration camp. I think he's celebrating, and he's a American citizen, and he swore out the Constitution without allowing him to stand in front of a bar while people are being deprived of their due process. And much not just ignoring the fact that they're being deprived of their due process, he's celebrating it, he's sick. We're all up for reelection. So, we're all up for reelection.
One thing to your point, it's not, the people of West Virginia aren't just going to suffer, there's people in West Virginia who are going to die because of these policies. And lack of Medicaid and access to food and access to healthcare will kill people.
All right, I'm just going to do a quick commercial. I'm Art Lane with United West Virginia. We're having a 50-51 protest Saturday at noon. How long can you come? We're going at 1:45, bringing limestone, representing why you passed away due to the policies of the Trump administration, or the policies up here in West Virginia. And come and do the die-in with us, we'll do it at 1:45 to 2:00 and then we'll all go home. So, come and join us, we want to light up the Boulevard, start in campus, as far as we can go. Thank you.
I love your public library t-shirt.
I would too.
I would grab the library bust.
Hey, I got a brick here, or the don't bother. So come on over, quiet, I'll do this presentation. My name is Teresa Miller, and I've just moved back to Charleston, not just, it's been a few years now. So what I'm interested in knowing is how are we going to organize? I've heard Delegate Pushkin, Pushkin several times, said you're interested in running, let us know, so I want to be involved in that. Sometimes in these groups, we have thoughtful people bubbling up and they have leadership qualities, but they're not aware of them. And so, sometimes it helps for other people to go talk to that person and say, we think we could, we'll help you to run. And whoever runs is going to take, need a whole lot of help. And one of the hardest things to do is to get foot soldiers, people going with you door to door and driving your car and that kind of thing. And I'm kind of too old to do that, I'll drive your car. And anyway, I think that's when all this anger is going to help because we're all so pissed off.
Well, my organization, West Virginia Citizen Action, we're a citizen-led grassroots action group, and we build leadership, we build community leaders.
Okay. And let's bring up those people who, I mean, I refused to run the first time they approached me, I said, no. And the second time, I thought, Aunt Barbara Floschauer got me to run, she said, just go down there and listen to me, see if you can do it. I went down there and I thought, not only can I do this, I can do it better than that guy.
That's right. But if you want to be involved and get people involved, I mean, I'm plugging my group here. We have so many great organizations, but I think out of all of us, we're the only like grassroots community organizing, and we're a C4, so we can politically organize.
Okay, I'm interested in getting people to run, I'm getting interested in driving people to areas where we can drop other people off and get them out door to door or something, that's the greatest way we can.
I think I gave you my card, let's check.
Okay, okay. We're building platforms.
Yes, we are, we are building a platform. Wonderful, love to have you.
So I think we're all calling on the same page in this group about the current conditions in El Salvador, how this is a lack of due process, no matter how people came into this country, but I wanted to make a quick update that this is no longer a problem that's just affecting people who entered this country illegally. There is currently a 19-year-old Venezuelan man who presented himself at the border who is in sequestration. Not only that, there is a US-born citizen who is in detention in Florida currently because a cop inadvertently identified him as illegal immigrant. The judge in his district does not have the capability to release him from jail, even though his misdemeanor defense has been cleared, even though his birth certificate has been presented to the court, she lacks the authority. And so this boy, this 20-year-old boy, is now in jail for at least another 48 hours. And at this point, there is no clear, there is like no certainty that ICE will actually release him.
If it can happen to them, it can happen to any of us. He's already saying.
He's said it much, he has said it much.
I'm Sally, and Sally Roberts with Rise Up West Virginia, and I just have to say that there is one fundamental right that right now is at risk that will affect all of the issues that we've been talking about tonight. And if there is one thing to do, it is call these guys and tell them to vote no on the SAVE Act, yes? Yes, you see? Because that act is an act that will restrict the rights of many women, of many people who don't have access to their birth certificate. It will restrict the rights of those who are too poor to buy the necessary. Yes, it's for voting rights. I wasn't clear. Voting rights, yes. This is the fundamental, most fundamental right that we have in this country and it's being stripped away. The Brennan Center is right now filing a suit against the president for putting out an executive order that does the same thing as the SAVE Act, and we hope that that goes through. But what really matters is to contact Shelley Moore Capito and Justice and tell them to vote no on the SAVE Act, you expect them to protect your right to vote.
And it's not just here, it's been changed in a lot of places.
It's already passed in the House, two accomplished critters in the House have already voted for that.
But if you're transgender and changed your name, and you've been adopted and changed your name, it affects anyone who's gone through any name change, so please.
I am Susan Below, and this is a question, a couple of questions to our absentee guests. A man once said he could shoot a person in Wall Street and still people would vote for him. Now, this second term as President of the United States thus far, through all the chaos to cuts to medical and research programs, children have died due to measles. Women have died when refused the lycra in medical care after losing their health rights. And soon, people on Medicaid, Medicare are also going to die needlessly due to these cuts ordered by this man. He is essentially putting a loaded gun to the heads of citizens depending on these programs and pulling the trigger. Will he ever be holy cannibal for these deaths? You four, how many are going to die until you and your colleagues stand together, grow backbones, and put a stop to this madness?
I know we talk a lot here about Shelley Moore Capito, but have you seen her commercials she runs over and over on TV where she just pledges her allegiance to Donald Trump? So the only way we are going to be able to get rid of somebody like her is through our vote. And we have to work to oust them out of office. And we have to work on the people that you know in your family or neighbors that you've just got to educate them. And they are running a commercial, the budget that Alex is over, they're running a commercial on TV this weekend, and if you can listen to the commercial or get ahold of it, I say, put it all over your social media and share it. It's all about her and the budget cuts that she is voting for. We have to educate people because a lot of people don't even know what's going on, they're trying to survive day to day. I mean, I have people, they don't even know what's going on, you know? So that is really our mission. We just have our votes, people, just have our votes.
Do we actually have an audio for the commercial, if everyone will like?
I have a quick question. Of the, what you handed out, and it says a sample script, and I'm thinking this script appeals to logic, it appeals, they're not going to hear this. Do we need to do this? Do we just bury them in call after call after call? That's what scares them.
Yeah, oh yeah, they, they.
What would be the ask here? It would be about Medicaid, what would be, we'd be saying, vote no on?
Vote no on any budget that includes cuts to Medicaid or SNAP.
Okay, okay, and just keep calling, call as a medic people.
Yes, as always possible.
We're going to play this commercial, and if you can hold it, share it on Facebook and pass it and beg people, share it, to share on their social media.
Okay, and we'll play it real quick.
That's a great.
I've got it too, so let me see.
... Essentially calling it a political stunt. Over 500,000 West Virginians are on Medicaid, that's no stunt. It's insulin, nursing home care, and cancer treatment in the backbone of our rural hospitals. When a senator's proud to vote against protecting our healthcare, it's clear who they're really working for, and it's not us. Call Senator Capito to let her know West Virginia needs Medicaid, paid for by West Virginia Citizen Action Group.
The commercial's going to be running on talk radio over the next week.
But she can run an ad on public TV because she has the money, you know? So this is the way to get your message out there.
These people don't talk news, that's where these.
Oh, it's on TV all the time.
We'll be posting this on our social media too, so you can share it.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, I think we are out of, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
One more.
One more.
Hello, my name's Mary, I just say that I'm a cheaper pronouns. I am a recipient of SNAP and Medicaid. I've been disabled since I was 22. I've been a community organizer my whole life. So I have a lot of thoughts about cuts to local programming, how our communities are going to make it through it. And, but I want to, honestly, I've been thinking more in this group about how I'm really heartwarming to see folks really distressed about people being criminalized and being sent somewhere without a due process, because it already happens here. It happened because now, criminalized to be trans, it's criminalized to be having abortions, it's criminalized to use drugs safely, it's criminalized to try to help other people to use drugs safely. We treat so many people here as disposable already. And so what are we each going to do in this room, outside of session, outside of calls, along with session, along with calls, to change that? Because it's going to take everyone in this room, and it's going to take everyone in the city, and it's going to take everyone in the state that has been left behind by a government a long, long time ago. And I'm also laying a gown, so speaking from that head as well. I'm really grateful to all the representatives that did come here in this room this evening because there are a lot of folks that didn't, including the votes on these empty chairs. And to make change, we're going to have to do more to come together to talk to empty chairs. And I really hope that we can do that.
I just had, I just had one comment. I was talking to Mike Pushkin, and I always like to know what I don't know. So at any rate, he indicated to me that the people in the chair, the vacant chairs, all of them come from money. So if that is in fact true, then what they're doing, they're doing to you intentionally because they're not the ones that are going to suffer. So I don't care how many calls you make, I believe you have to show up somewhere in the streets, because I've been in there, I've been in offices in DC, and sometimes they don't even show up to see you when you come into their office as a constituent. So I believe until all groups get together and start coalescing in the streets, not violently, but coming together and saying, this is what we need, you don't need it, but we need it. Since you have all the money that you need, you have the insurance that you need, you have the food that you need, the rest of us need assistance and you're supposed to represent all of us.
That's right.
Can I ask you one simple question?
They got a question and then we will get, right, you will be my final question, I promise.
Hey, so I'm Casey. So, I just want you guys to know that trans kids are really in danger in this state. I'm a teacher, I teach up at Capital, I go by VAE. It's really scary. There's a bill currently on the governor's desk that is going to force teachers to out students to their parents. And I do want you to know that if you are in support of that, yeah, sure, parents should know about their children, but if the kids aren't telling their parents, it's because the parents have given them a reason not to tell them. They do not feel safe with their parents. So, and there's also a bill on the governor's desk that is going to completely ban any kind of gender-affirming care for minors.
And that is lifesaving medicine. Without that medicine, they will, some of them will kill themselves. If they are outed to their parents, some of them will be killed. This is not okay. And it's really scary to be a trans teacher right now. It's really scary to be a trans kid. It's just really scary to be trans in general right now. And so, I just wanted to bring that up, that please call the governor and tell him to veto 154 to 299. Thank you.
My last question. Right here.
It seems to me that it's quite, you know, we have to get back to reality. In this state, tens of thousands of people voted for the opposite of what we've been talking about the other day. This is the second highest percentage of voters supporting Trump as opposed to not. The only thing that seems to show any hope is that there are some people who are switching or saying, I voted for Trump and I'm pissed off and I don't, I need to know from all of these, what are they, five, 10 different organizations? That's quite interesting to me. Instead of one organization or some coalition of organizations. But how many, are you guys getting, you know, any kind of increase in people being interested, people becoming members, people making donations? Without that, we're not going to get anywhere. We can all, if you think about the fact that 20, what was it, 28, 30% of the vote for Trump in this state, that's all there was, or against Trump, I mean. If all 30% of those people got on the phone and called Shelley Moore Capito, she wouldn't give a damn. Jim Justice wouldn't even know what kind of the phone to pick up because he's too busy with his damn dog. You know, those two, they just do whatever, they all fall for it. What, every time I write to them, I say, you're just puppets. Stand up for yourself.
I can speak for, I can speak for.
The question is, are you getting any kind of increase in the number of people who are becoming aware?
I can speak for West Virginia Citizen Action. We just started a Morgantown branch and what is the number, 1,800? We have 1,800 members that have just signed on in the last two months.
They needed last month or six weeks ago for the Federation, West Virginia Federation Democratic Women, and the speaker said they've never had that many people attend.
All right, the only way. I live in West Virginia, formerly Free West Virginia. We've been having rallies every Saturday across from the Capitol, at the boulevard, since about the end of February. We are a new group. And I'm going to tell you, every week we get more beats, more waves, more people speaking. When people stop and they go, are you MAGA? No, okay, good, good, good. Yeah, I'm scared. We get that all the time. There's more people around here you wouldn't believe that are scared to speak out. And that's why we do it every Saturday. If we're not having a big event like this Saturday, we're there every Saturday. It's because we want to show people that, hey, we're out here. If you want to have the nerve to come out and join us, we would gladly welcome you in. Bring a sign, bring a friend, bring your voice, that's what we say. And I just, it's amazed me how many, we get more people beeping and waves than we get people that go by with the frowns.
You know, a lot of people that, in West Virginia especially, you say, why do you vote Republican? And I always get, I want to take them with guns. They have this disillusionment that Democrats are going to come in and confiscate your guns and it's all education, you know?
That they sweep talk to coal companies saying, you know, obviously they take their coal.
Yeah, they have disillusionment.
They just screwed them with terrorists and getting rid of the house.
You should probably just.
People still don't understand that.
We got a young person here who wants to speak, bring it.
So, when we first got in here and Lyda gave us that amazing icebreaker to start us off, I'd expressed one thing that had kept me up was that there's not enough youth engagement in this field.
Amen.
And that the biggest thing that's hurting us as a group of people in this state is that the youth aren't interested. We aren't marketing towards youth. They're enraveled in other things and that's what's making it hard to get movements passed. The young folks are what we need. The young people are what we need. After what happened, before me, it's always been the young people. When you guys were young. You're not 10 years old.
I say.
Yeah, when you guys were in the forefront. And that's what has led our constitution to where it is. Our republic and our democracy, it's been the young ones. And that's what we really need as a country. We need the young people and people to represent the young people. Where I'm leading you to is my father. He's running for Senate in the fourth district.
All right, Casey, you have to extend his perfume by an hour now. And give that kid my email because I want to talk to you about marketing to your demographic because we need to.
It's organized.
As a final comment, our speaker says a final comment and we're going to wrap this up. Thank you.
I just wanted to comment on a couple of things. So, number one, I do think that there is broad engagement. I did go to 50-51 in DC. I was afraid nobody would be there because the social media posts did not seem to be de-privatized. There were 100,000 people there. Second thing, I have an ask for all of you who have involvement in community or leadership roles. I unfortunately think it's very likely that this man will be found to be dead, right? I think that it's very likely that he has been extraditionally deported against an anti-deprovision order to a concentration camp and they cannot find him. They have weeks to buck him up for a long distance photo and they haven't. So, my question for the group is, what are we going to do when that news drops? And that's what I want you guys to take back to your groups. When that news drops that the United States has funded a concentration camp where a man with an anti-deport order has died, what are we going to do? Because I really think that max action is the only thing that is going to make a difference. I truly do that. So, I just want to drop that. And then the third thing is, 50-51 in Huntington, it's going to be this Saturday. So, for anybody that's on that side of the state, people have a lawyer speaking to the constitutional crisis and, you know, what it means, whether or not this man has any kind of criminal history is irrelevant. This is the backbone of our constitution. So, I think that if we don't, if we don't protest for the United States paying to maintain a concentration camp and sending somebody there to die against a usual order, what's the threshold?
There's just a little strike.
Yes, I'm sorry. I was trying to remember the name of the movement. They don't have a branch in DC in West Virginia.
Discreet General.
Yeah, and there is a sign up, there's a national movement that's trying to get people to register for, I'm sorry. But I do think. The 3.5%.
Well, I want to thank you all for being here. You are what has inspired me. I worry for my kids, but you have inspired me. So, I kind of want to lead us off on a quick chant and then I will respect your time as we have gone over. But it's been so fruitful and so engaging and so empowering. Ooh, kids are. But who do these people work for? Us. Who do these people work for? Us. You work for us. You work for us. You work for us. So, please, take this energy back with you. If you, I've got cards in my pocket. I'll hand them out to anybody who wants one, I'll give you extras. If you want to send Capito, pick a week. If you want to send Capito a postcard every day for a week, come get some. We'll order more if we need them. But do something.
Can we clarify what time the protest begins on Saturday?
At noon, at noon. At noon, we'll be lining up along the boulevard with regular signs like a normal protest. We usually, we have it from it for the Capitol front, but we're only going to do the die-in up there. We're kind of trying to let it look bigger by if we get people along the boulevard. So, when you drive, you can't miss us. Trying to do something a little different. And then at 1:45, if you have a homemade tombstone with why a policy had killed you, come up with us and kind of lay down and hold your tombstone up behind you. And at 1:45 to 2:00 and then we're going to just all leave at that point.
Thank you.
And we're there every Saturday at noon. Even if we're not having a big event, we're right across the road.
Thank you all for being here. Thank you for being with us. Thank you for being here. And thank you to all the partners that worked with us to make this possible.